Chief, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you lead us in prayer tonight, please?
Yes. Father God in heaven, we thank you for this beautiful, beautiful day that you blessed us with. God be it, we thank you for everything that you're doing in the city of Montevista and in the San Luis Valley. God, we ask that you will open doors for the city, Lord, to get things done, the things that the city needs to get done. God, and if there's any bad doors that we don't need to go through, Father God, we ask that you will close them. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Victor. Roll call, Nita?
Counselor Foster?
I'm back.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Here.
Counselor Locke?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
A quorum is declared.
Do we have modifications to the agenda?
Yes, sir, we do have a modification to the agenda. We will be removing G1B.
I want to move to approve the modifications to the agenda.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded for the modifications to the agenda, is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to modify the agenda, removing G1B.
Approval of consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting from October 7th, 2021, and review and approval of accounts payable. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting, October 7th, 2021, and review and approval of accounts payable, is there any more discussion? You need a?
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda?
All right. Citizen comments, special presentations, scheduled appearances, in order to be included in this portion of the agenda, you have to file appropriate paperwork with the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. So we have a MOU between the city of Montevista and Friends of Sky High and Montevista Community Fund for the Sky High Project. Good evening, council. I am pleased to bring forth to council a memorandum of understanding between the city of Montevista and the Outkamp Foundation. I am going to read the memorandum of understanding into record because there is a very significant change, but a very good change, and after I get it read into record, we'll talk about it. So, for the record, memorandum of understanding, the Outkamp Foundation has significantly played a role in providing funding for the construction of the new Sky High Regional Event and Conference Center. They have supplied $2,200,000 grant for the design and schematic drawing phase, a $2 million grant in the construction phase, a $2.5 million multi-year grant to make payments of the San Luis Valley Federal Bank lease purchase agreement. Currently, there is $400,000 of principal of that $2.5 million San Luis Valley Federal Bank lease purchase agreement in a city of Montevista bank account with Colorado Trust. These funds are restricted by the Outkamp Foundation to be utilized for the construction project unless the Outkamp Foundation approves the funds to be utilized for another reason. The Friends of Sky High and the city of Montevista have asked the Outkamp Foundation to release 300 of those funds in the Colorado Trust bank account to be utilized for the purchase of the conference center furniture, recreational equipment, and kitchen equipment for the sole purpose of the new Sky High Regional Event and Conference Center. The Outkamp Foundation has discussed granting the city of Montevista, or excuse me, granting the Montevista Community Fund a fourth grant of approximately $400,000 for the sole purpose to purchase, for the sole purpose of purchasing of the conference center furniture, recreational equipment, and kitchen equipment for the new Sky High Regional Event and Conference Center. All purchased equipment will be approved by the Friends of Sky High. It is understood that the city of Montevista will be the owner of this said equipment, but it shall be for the specific use of the Sky High Regional Event and Conference Center and shall remain on that site. The city of Montevista will be responsible for any maintenance and the replacement of said equipment once the original equipment has been depreciated or have seen its life expectancy. The city of Montevista and the Friends of Sky High will seek grant funding from government and private sources to help with the cost of the conference center furniture, the recreational equipment, and the kitchen equipment. Any funds received for these purposes will be first applied to the purchased or applied to the San Luis Valley Federal Bank lease option. And it is to be signed by the city of Montevista. It was originally discussed as a loan, but the Outkamp Foundation felt that it would be all around better for everyone involved if they just issued another grant. So, a huge shout out to them for seeing the need and being willing to address that so we are not encumbering any debt. It is a great continuation of the community project that has been Sky High. So, what I need from council tonight, if you all are in agreement with this memorandum of the understanding, is I need a vote of approval for the MOU and the authorization to have the mayor sign the document. Here, Rob, we'll put a clarification when you were reading, you said 300, I think it's 300,000. It is 300,000, I am so sorry. I just want that on the record. Yes. Not 300,000, it's 300,000. 300,000, sorry, yes. And in your packets, there is a sample draft letter from the Outkamp Foundation to the mayor and the city of Montevista that outlines kind of what they were looking at doing, so that is a draft. So with that, I would open it up for any questions you might have, or if Carla, if you have anything you want to say as Friends of Sky High.
Thank you, council. What is happening here is, is we're trying to purchase the furniture for the conference center, the recreation equipment, and kitchen equipment. And we've been coming up with different budgets and it depends on how you value the equipment we're looking at. But it could range anywhere from 500,000 to 750,000, 800, depending on the budget you put together. So that is how we come up with releasing the 300,000 from the one part. And then if we come in with the other 400,000, we're making up the budget. And it's just a gap, really, we're trying to gap this thing so we can get this done in the meantime. And then we'll seek grants, we're going to still seek grants. And again, we'll probably be coming back to the city because some of them will have to be in the city's name, just like the USDA grant. That was for 100,000, we haven't heard any update on that yet. I know Chief's been trying to get a hold of them, but that's what we're trying to do, is get this done. And that's why we're doing this 300,000 and then this additional 400, is to get the money put together so we can go out and actually buy it. The way I kind of see it, really, it's the Outkamp Foundation with its next step out here. If we don't get those other grants, you know, it's a grant in the same ones. It's a win-win for Sky High. We're, you know, we're just trying to make ways to come up with the money to cash flow it, so. And that we can order, because when you order a lot of this stuff, they're either going to want 50% or 75% or even 100% upfront. So, we got to get this done, and we all are hearing about the supply chain issues that's going on. So, you know, that's another issue we're going to have to deal with. That's the goal.
Thank you, Carla. Is there, on the equipment that's being purchased, is there any like back order on that?
There's lead times on all of it, so that's kind of one of the reasons for the gap funding is because of the lead times for us to wait until we actually have a budget for January. There is not a chance that we don't have any of that stuff in, ready for the first event. So the recreation equipment, definitely, you know, the Ag Conference is the first event of the year. We wouldn't have any furniture for the Ag Conference at all. So, the gap funding is really kind of critical to make sure that we actually have a convention in an event center that's usable as of January 2022. I mean, that's kind of the goal, and it, it needs to, you know, there's a lot of things, and the lead times keep getting longer. You know, that's, that's the scary part, because no vendor is, they're not honoring their prices like they used to. They used to give you a bid and say, you know, it's good for the next 30 days or 90 days. Most of them don't want to go above 10 days. And then, you know, shipping is not six weeks, it's, I mean, some of it's 16, 18, 20. I mean, some of my water parts are 27 weeks from an order, which is just, it's, it's, it's absolutely scary. I mean, so, yeah, and, and they keep talking, you know, you hear on the news, they keep talking about it getting worse. So, hopefully it gets better, but yeah, so we are running up against some serious things.
So again, that was an MOU to put the MOU and then have the mayor sign?
Right, so I need to have approval for the memorandum of understanding between the Outkamp Foundation and the city of Montevista, and I need authorization for the mayor to sign that document. Make a motion to approve the MOU between the Outkamp Foundation and the city of Montevista and authorize the mayor to sign said MOU.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the MOU between the city of Montevista and Friends of Sky High and for me to sign it, is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the MOU for the Outkamp Foundation and the city of Montevista and have the mayor sign.
Thank you. Chamber report.
Hello, everybody. So, we had our crane auction for the 12 cranes that we put up for auction, and we were able to sell four when we did a Facebook Live. So we still have eight cranes, so if anybody wants a metal crane, come check them out at the chamber. We have, some of them are really cool that are still, you know, being sold. And if we don't sell those ones right away, we have plans to sell them in the near future. Crane Festival is underway, so I've been attending the Crane Festival meetings as well as Nita has. And so, we, on the chamber side, we're going to have a normal Crane Festival craft show, which will be that second weekend in March, at the same time as the Crane Festival. We are teaming up with Colorado 4x4, and we are going to help put on their Trump or Treat. This year, October 29th, from four to, I believe they're doing nine. My, the cars that are going to line up will be four to six. But we'll have crafts and games and activities, lots of candy, and hopefully we can get a lot of cars to line up Adams Street. And kids will get to see, kids will just hang out. I know that Tammy has already talked to quite a few businesses on Adams Street to pass out candy, and then tomorrow I'm going to go and hit up the ones that she hasn't been able to get in contact with and see if they will for us. We are starting sponsorships for our 2022 Crane Swoop. So we, the cranes are done, I got to go pick them up next week, and then we'll have cranes in the office. So we'll be selling, if you want to sponsor the cranes, that will go up, they'll go up that first week of March again and stay up until August. We have those ready, and then our Holiday Bazaar, we're looking for some vendors still, but it'll be December 3rd and 4th at the Jim of the Nazarene Church. I think, did I miss anything? I don't think so. But yeah, we're starting to begin into our busy season, which is nice, so.
How much are the cranes to sponsor this year, is this nice saying?
So we upped it to 200, because cost of getting the birds was pretty significant from last year. So, so it's 200 to sponsor and then 100 to buy back, so 300 if you want the crane to pull back.
So you said you still have cranes that you're trying to sell?
Yeah, I have eight cranes that we're trying to sell.
How many of those cranes?
So, the starting bid currently is 300 because it was that much to sponsor, but we're still in negotiations of keeping that price.
Do you have the ones that haven't been purchased on?
It's on our Facebook page, but I can definitely send them over. Yeah. The, the three, three of them are from Rain Brews, and then the two Montevista Eye Care ones, one was like that big iris one that was over by Dairy Queen. And then the city of Montevista one is still available, and I can't remember the other two, but.
Is one of them a little worse?
No, that one got sold, yeah. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone, thanks for the opportunity to be here this evening. I was hopeful that one of my other colleagues would show up, Gretchen Schalabarg or Heller, would be able to join us this evening. I actually had Cheryl Wright McCarty outside, and then she got a phone call that her friend was in an accident, so she had to go pick her up, so unfortunately you're stuck with me. So, my name is Jacqueline Gable Hurst, I'm here on behalf of the SLV Sky High Stampede Queen Group. I was privileged to serve as a 2002 Miss Sky High Stampede. Serving as Miss Sky High has certainly been one of the highlights of my life. It was a wonderful experience and one that changed my life forever. Tonight, I'm here as the spokeswoman for the SLV Stampede Queen Group. I'm currently serving as one of the group's co-chairs. Approximately 70 women have served as Miss Sky High from 1919 to 2004. As you're probably aware, each queen had a variety of duties to perform during her year reign. As spokeswoman for the stampede, we made public appearances, shacked cabs in the rodeo arena, assisted with other rodeo events like mutton busting, participating in local parades, as well as in other communities as ambassadors for the Sky High Stampede, Colorado's oldest pro rodeo. This past July, about 15 of us gathered to celebrate the stampede by riding in the parade. Each of us are very proud of the part that we played in the history and the legacy of the SLV Sky High Stampede. The reason that I'm here tonight is to ask for your consideration, the request of the SLV Sky High Queen Group for a permanent home for our queen exhibit. This queen display includes a traditional photograph of each queen with their name and year of reign below. The Montevista Chamber of Commerce housed these photos for several years. At one point, the photos were housed in a Montevista restaurant owned by Beverly Mann Stewart, who served as Miss Sky High in 1955. The photos also looked out the windows of the Montevista facade building. In July, the photos were displayed in the Rio Grande County Museum in Del Norte. The SLV Sky High queens would be so honored if our photos could be permanently housed at the new and beautiful SLV Event Center. What a perfect place to celebrate the history, beauty, and legacy of the SLV queens. Montevista is a place that is very dear to each queen. This is the place where we were crowned and began our reign. This is the place where we connected with the community and the parade and rodeo fans. The current display consists of 16 frames that hold up multiple queen photos like the one I have here tonight. Again, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you for considering the request of the SLV Stampede Queen Group tonight. We would love to have a permanent home for our queen photos on a wall at the new event center so that the guests from near and far who use the facility can view these queen display and celebrate the history of the SLV Sky High Stampede queens.
My presentation.
Thank you.
We've talked about that, Carla?
Yeah, I mean. Thank you, council. Thank you. From the event center going into the conference center, in the hallway, there is one area that's, it's fairly large. And we actually had in the wall a little box built where the plaque that was the WPA project for the old building will set inside that box. We were thinking we would make that in kind of the historical part of, of the building, you know, the place for the queen pictures, some old pictures of, of Sky High, the Crane Festival, hopefully, the town, you know, different events, the circus, whatever event, you know, might have happened. So it'd be kind of the historical end. We also have had some people offer to give us display cases for permanent display of old items of whether it be stampede or, or the town. I know way back when, I don't know, when I was on stampede committee, we did kind of a history museum one year, and the original tickets to Sky High Stampede were actually metal. And if I could ever talk the guy out of donating, it'd be awesome, but they were, they were about a three by five piece, kind of a tin. And that was the original tickets way back when. But I, I myself have a license plate, a Sky High license plate, there's Coke bottles. I know some people have Spurs, and I'm sure there's other items. There's old programs, whether it be stampede, the circus, you know, different things like that. But that hallway is going to be very big, and we were thinking perhaps that, that part of the hallway by the event center into the conference room would kind of be the historical part. And we do have a wall kind of in mind for that, where it might look good. And actually, Kathy Woods met today with a gentleman about the donor wall that would be in that portion of the building as well, and apparently he has some pretty great ideas. So that's kind of where we're heading on maybe some of the decoration type thing.
That's what I was thinking.
But this, this kind of has been talked about, and friends would recommend that that would be an appropriate place to display the queens.
Awesome. Are they still doing the queen?
No, 2004 was the last time they had a queen. So we've just been kind of meeting, kind of a variety of years, because, you know, some of us know each other. But about 10 and a, 10 to 11 years ago, prior to this year, a few of us got together, but unfortunately, some people have passed away or we've lost contact with them. But we have contact probably with about 20 people, I think. They're not all here, but we're hoping next year with the 100th that we can make something big of it.
So will they do, do, does anybody know if they'll do the queen again or why they're not?
It's something, this, my understanding is it's something with a stampede board that there was struggles with, they really didn't, they just provided the funding, and there was struggles with it. Tammy and Kathy Aldrich were the sponsors of the last years of it, and they just explained that it was a struggle with the stampede board to get the funding for it. They really didn't have to, the stampede board didn't really have to do much to it, is my understanding. They just provided the funding, but it sounded like, it was kind of like pulling teeth, is my understanding. I have not talked to them, we've just been meeting on Zoom, and then we did the July parade. So, we're hoping some ideas for the 100th. Anita Olmi has been talking to people that maybe we'll do a brunch to include all the county queens, whether it was fair or anything like that. But the parade will probably just do us a stampede queens again. We got a lot of applause and people are very happy to see us, so.
Might be something to talk to stampede about.
Yeah, we have.
Talking for the 100th.
We have a point about there, you know, we started meeting kind of like in March, I think it was. Jim Clark with the article in the paper, and then I contacted him, and we've just kind of been trying to get interest and trying to get contacts of people, like some people have moved out of state. Beverly Stewart recently passed away, she was in Florida, and I was hoping to get her back here next year for the 100th, but that didn't happen, obviously, so.
Very good, thank you, sounds like you've kind of got a plan for it, so.
We're trying.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you guys for allowing me to come.
Appreciate you.
May I speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Clark, you may.
Once again, my name is Jim Clark, and as we talked about early on about this project, we didn't know how we'd get it going, but we finally got some of the gals together, and they're really enthused about trying to get this thing going. As far as future queens, there is talk about that, but we're trying to work that out and see how that will come about and what will happen. The amazing thing about this, this is history. And if you ever get a chance, we have several bios from the past queens, and it's very interesting. This wasn't just a deal where you rode in the arena and waved your hand in the parade and stuff like that. They travel all across Colorado into Wyoming, Kansas, different states promoting Sky High Stampede. So, some of the bios are very interesting. Louise Colville from the Rio Grande Museum is hoping to get bios from the rest of the younger queens, and she wants to make a, kind of a booklet of the bios of queens of Sky High Stampede. So, we're going to be working on that, trying to get that put together, and we thank you for your help trying to move this thing forward and finding a place, and with the Friends of the Sky Stampede and everybody that's taken this into consideration. My part is, because my mom has lived past my stampede in 1933, so that's why I got an interest in it. But like I said, it's history, and we don't want to see it die. The reason we started talking about this is we knew they had a big program out at the pool at one time, had all the pictures, a lot of the saddles, different paraphernalia that the gals wore and everything. So we started looking for the pictures, we couldn't find them, and we couldn't find anybody that really knew where they were. So, we found a clue that they might be at the Transportation Museum in the very back room stored. And lo and behold, they were, so we had a couple of gals that helped us get them out, get them, and then we were able to talk Louise Colville into doing a show to the, up at Rio Grande County Museum before the stampede, which is about two weeks. And so she's got a definite interest in trying to help preserve this, and she would like also if there's any chance of getting copies of the pictures for their archives up there at the Rio Grande County Museum. So, it's kind of an ongoing process, and the gals have got a lot of enthusiasm if we can just get them all together at the same time. But there's a lot of enthusiasm trying to get this thing going, and once again, we appreciate all the help that the city's done, and I'd like to thank Carla again for the Outkamp Foundation, which has been marvelous for this whole project. So with that, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Got a question. The, you said it's been a queen for how many years?
Since 1919.
So just curious, has there ever been discussion about a king? I mean, I don't understand, because, you know, like there's a queen and a king, you know, like, it's like the homecoming king, the homecoming queen, you know, and then like, I like that, what you said, you know, they would go out and, you know, like promote this guy, like that, that's, that's awesome.
You're nominating yourself, Victor?
No.
At the parade this year, they had, what, the queen was a 100th? Was she a 100 years old?
Wow.
Yeah, and so, and I think we have one 90 and another one 80 that's involved in the group, with the group. It's really been interesting and fun.
That's awesome.
We'll suggest that, Victor, and see if the gals will let us.
Sounds like they've been doing pretty good without a king.
I'm just cooking out for all the guys too.
We have any more questions? We have more questions.
I would, uh, move to, um, approve, right, move to approve, um, making the Sky High Visional Event Center a permanent home for the, uh, Stampede Queen display photos.
Second to that.
Then moved in second to approve to have the Sky Complex as the permanent home for the Queen's pictures. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to be an oddball here, I'm going to jump in on this one. I think it's a great place for it, I think, uh, it's neat when you go to places like that and you look through the historical pictures. I'm not sure that this should be council's decision, um, as I think it probably would be better served by whoever is administering the Sky High project. Um, that would be my only concern with the motion.
I think with the motion, we just give them full approval, and Carla would be the one that's really grand rodding that show out there, so, and she's already got plans for it, so just giving them our blessing is what I look at it. That's my opinion.
That's kind of why I made the motion.
Any more discussion on that? Anita?
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sekola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve to have the pictures of the Skyhead Stamp, Stampede Queens a permanent place at the Sky High Event Center.
Very good.
Congratulations, Queens.
Thank you. We'll look for some Kings, okay?
If I ever get a picture of you, I'm just going to hang it on the wall. Citizen comments, citizen council welcomes your unscheduled comments, please limit the comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at this meeting. Do we have any citizen comments? Citizen comments, Margot? Come on, don't fail me now.
Even with the mask, I saw that smirk.
Oh, well. I don't, hello, Council, hello, everybody, I don't have really a lot to say, except I think Montevista's waking up. I see commotion on Adam Street and things happening, I'm not quite sure what I'm seeing happening, but there's action and there's, there's a momentum going on. And I just feel like we're on the right track and moving, and I'm so proud of the city, and I'm so happy to live here and see all you wonderful people, it's a great community, thank you.
Thank you, Margot.
Thank you, Margot.
All right, looks like we're going to move to resolutions. Anita?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, before you, you have Resolution twenty twenty-one dash eighteen. Um, if you remember back in February of twenty twenty, U-Bay's approved an ordinance. Um, and that ordinance, and I'll go ahead and read this resolution into record. This resolution is to establish fees for the Montevista, um, procurement department. Whereas the City of Montevista adopted Ordinance nine hundred, and ordinance adopting new Article Nine of Chapter Four of the Montevista Code concerning tobacco retailer licensing. And whereas a reasonable fee should be charged to accommodate the administrative costs for the City Clerk's Office to administer such services. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved with the City Council of the City of Montevista that the following fees are hereby instituted and charged by the City of Montevista Clerk's Office, which, which charges shall be payable directly to the City of Montevista. One, the application fee for tobacco retailer licensing within the City of Montevista shall be a hundred dollars. The reason that this resolution is coming before you is because you did adopt that Ordinance nine hundred back in February of twenty twenty. Um, the State Tobacco, um, Division is starting to come down harder on their tobacco retailer, real retailers, and they're requiring for those retailers to have a license by the cities now. And when we passed that ordinance, we did not pass a fee to go with it.
Have we researched or have heard of other municipalities and what they're charging?
So yes, so I actually reached out to quite a few different communities. Um, the one that I've been working closely with is Boulder County, and I know it's a much bigger county, but she's, her and I are doing a lot of the research together. And a lot of the other communities are just getting to the ordinance process. Um, but the one communities that we have found are charging anywhere from five hundred, uh, two hundred, and then I spoke with chief about it, and we discussed it, and it was because we are a smaller community, and I think I have six total tobacco retailers in the area, that that would fall into place. A hundred dollars would be a really, it's not too expensive, and it's not, you know, on the lower end, it's kind of in between what everybody else is tracking.
Does that cover the time you, you'll have to spend on it, or what do you have to do for tobacco license?
When we approved the, when you guys approved the ordinance back in Jan, um, February twenty twenty, along with that ordinance, I had also created the application, so the application's already done. Basically, what, I have thirty days to complete the application and approve it or deny it. Um, go out, I will inspect the property to make sure that they have all the proper signage for, you know, under twenty-one, you can't sell that under twenty-one, um, and everything like that. Once I've signed off on it, then I would take it to the chief, he would look at it, and he would have to sign off on it to make sure that there have been no violations at that store. So the process isn't, it's not a huge process, so I believe that that definitely would cover that.
Me personally, I would bump up that price, you know, just, just because, like, cigarettes due to our kids and due to, you know, the community itself, you know, it's like, okay, here's a hundred bucks for you to do what you do, what I mean? And it's, it's easy, because like, you know, a carton of cigarettes is how much? Sixty bucks, seventy bucks, I don't know.
Seventy-five, seventy.
I smoke close to ninety.
So that's like five customers, or one customer for a license, what I mean, like, so I, I don't know, that's just my own personal opinion.
And that is a council's discretion.
So, but I don't know, I would say at least two hundred. That's up to everybody.
So does the city keep the full fee, or does it, is it targeted toward, uh, education?
I know that full fee comes, it stays with the city, as far as I know right now, that the state hasn't. Hasn't, you know, the state's fee for tobacco licensing is almost fifteen hundred dollars.
The state fee is, so any tobacco retailer has to pay that for the state?
So now what they are requiring is for tobacco retailers to have a license from the city, but they also have to have a license from the state.
Is that per location, for instance, Alta has two locations, do they have to pay per location?
Yes, sir.
I don't feel like the punitive, uh, retailers that are selling illegal product, it's legal in the state of Colorado, but in the United States as a whole, and treating it as a punitive, licensing as a punitive? Fee seems out of line.
I'm going to have to agree with the Council of Lorenz, I think if we're going to, it, it does seem punitive. And if we're going to do that, then we need to raise the taxes on Sonic and Dairy Queen, because those are carcinogens and lead to obesity, and, you know, those things are bad for us, too. There, there's, if we start taxing everything that's bad for us, that's kind of a slip, I mean, we might be a lot healthier if we're all eating lettuce and a, you know, lettuce and a carrot for lunch. But it's, I don't think we're going to be real happy.
These are all personal choices.
And these are all personal choices, and they're all legal, I mean, we're not, alcohol, oh my goodness. You know, that's a biggie that, you don't kill people driving while smoking, you do kill people driving while drunk. So if we're going to get punitive, let's, let's sow some stuff at the alcohol, and, and again, just, I'm just pulling this out. I don't want to throw anything at the alcohol people. But. I don't even like the hundred dollar thing.
And just so you know, Councilor Locke, um, liquor license, they do pay for a liquor license within the City of Montevista.
Oh, I, I know, I know, they do play, you know, so I, I mean, I, I can understand a nominal fee for, for a license to sell a controlled, I don't want to say substance, because that makes it sound like a drug, but cigarettes are controlled by age. I just don't think we need to pick on one industry over another. And that's not just because I'm a smoker, because I've been a non-smoker too, I felt the same way.
Motion to approve Resolution two zero two one hyphen one eight, establishing a fee for Montevista. Uh, establishing fees for tobacco license for Montevista.
I second that, I mean.
Been moved in second to approve Resolution two zero two one dash one eight, establishing fee for tobacco retailer licensing? Any more discussion?
I, I would approve, I would just wish it was a little more, that's all.
Any more discussion? Anita?
Mayor Protem Sekola?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
And Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash eighteen, resolution establishing fees for the Montevista Tobacco Retailer Licensing.
Thank you, Anita.
You're welcome.
Now the next item of business, Contract and Agreements and Lease, City Manager Contract for Gigi Blondberry.
So Council, before you in your package, you do have a copy of the contract. Um, I hope you've all read it, and I'm sure you have, I'm sure you've all agreed on it. Um, so I will turn that over to Council for your council's discussion.
Resolution to approve the contract for the City Manager, Jeanette Dennis Blondberry.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the contract for City Manager, Gigi Blondberry? Almost messed that up, sorry, Gigi. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sekola?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the contract for Gigi Dennis Blondberry for City Manager.
Heard a lot of good things about you, but you've got a tough act to follow. I know she does. He's done a phenomenal job, and for much longer than he meant to, I'm sure. We're excited. Yeah, very excited.
I am too, thank you very much.
We all did a dance in executive session.
We do have that, uh, Victor dancing on YouTube, so.
We do have?
While, while we're on that. Do you have anything you'd like to add? Do you do, before we get this all signed?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and Council members, I'm very excited to be joining this phenomenal team, and, you know, the support and the communication I've already had with some of the staff has been very positive and, and encouraging, and I'm looking forward to getting started. Great way to start off the new year, I'm glad you changed the date to January one. Oh, just teasing, just teasing.
I gotta say, you deserved that.
I wish I had my camera.
Thank you. She got you, Chief.
I think you better be on your toes.
All right, looks like we will be moving to Staff Proposals, Reports and Actions. City Manager slash PD.
You have a finance report first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that one.
That's okay, you don't want to, you want to.
No, no. You come on up, I am sorry, I did that, but, come up here.
I'm glad that's about over.
Sit down, Chief.
And City Manager.
You don't need to sit there, right?
Anita, I'm sorry, I did that, I.
I am not offended at all.
I have to keep you all guessing once in a while.
Well, um, we emailed your, the financial reports were in your packet for your review prior to the meeting. Um, I just thought I would, uh, give you a little presentation so you could look at pictures instead of numbers. Maybe that will make it easier to go through. And then Locke, and can you see?
No, no.
You're good.
Okay, um, okay, I get nervous, so, um, the, this is for the end of September. Um, we've completed seventy-five percent of the fiscal year. The cash balance in the main checking account of the general fund is two million ninety-six thousand. The water fund is three hundred and fifty-four thousand, sewer fund, three hundred and forty thousand. We have revenue in excess of expenditures of the, in the general fund of six hundred and forty-four thousand. Water fund is a hundred and fifty-five, sewer is a hundred and seventy-four. Total expenditures percent of the approved budgeted amount, general fund is at forty-one, water is fifty-seven, and sewer is thirty-six. Which is considerably lower, considering we've had seventy-five percent of the year, and we've only spent, for instance, forty-one percent of the approved budget. Um, I'm doing a comparative, um, with, uh, receivables, payables, monthly revenue, and so this is the receivable. Um, the general fund accounts receivable consists of court fines, property tax liens, utility billings, um, business licenses, um, the water fund and the sewer fund both are mainly utility billing and property tax liens. But, um, the sewer fund also has a receivable for the proximity loan. Um, accounts payable is mainly, uh, regular payables, operational payables, and employee benefit payables. And some examples of the employee benefits would be like supplemental insurance premiums, um, flex spending accounts that, that we maintain, um, accrued comp absences. And they typically calculate that, I believe, at the beginning of the year and, and update it. Uh, total, comparing total revenue of the different funds, you can see that there's not much difference in the, in the years from this year to last year, but if you want to still single out sales tax, it still remains, um, a significant increase over what it was last year. The, um, total expenditures year-to-date, last, this year, um, in all the funds compared to last year, um, are less, the, and the expenditures in the general fund are approximately ten percent less than what was budgeted. I have a comparison for monthly revenue, and this is just in the general fund. And you can see typically it's between two hundred and forty and maybe three hundred and thirty thousand. Um, the big jumps in March and April were, um, the, reflect the receipt of the lease proceeds for the Sky High, um, project, and they were recorded in the general fund. Um, and then in April, we moved those funds from the general fund into the capital project to reflect where the, um, spending was being recorded. Monthly expenditures, um, range from a hundred and eighty-three to three hundred and fifty. Monthly expenditures range from a hundred and eighty-three to three hundred and fifty thousand. If you want to average it, it's about two hundred and forty-four thousand a month. And here's a slide for the expenditures compared to the budget. You can see we're under budget in all areas. The big difference in the Sky High Park, the expenditures to the budget is also because of the, the budgeting for the loan and the expenditures were placed in the general fund. We'll be putting a resolution before you, a budget resolution to move that amount from the general fund to the capital project. So that will make that even out. I'm also going to let you know each month about the current ratio. And that is defined as three point six three of your current assets for every one dollar of your current liabilities, which is really pretty good, and this is just in the general fund. We have eight months of operating expenses in the total unreserved general fund and five point seven two months in the unreserved general fund net of assets. And I'm done. Questions?
That was a good presentation, thank you.
You did great.
Fast in pictures.
The, I do have some que-
At least you didn't get quiet as cross-eyed this time.
I do have questions for you, thank you for your, your thing. You said that currently we have revenue in excess of expenses of about six hundred and forty-four thousand. I, I know that revenue is somewhat linear, but expenses are not. Do you see in the upcoming future that that number is going to increase or decline?
I think it will probably decline as, you know, we're getting towards the end of the calendar year and there are some expenses that were budgeted that, that have not been expended yet and so that, you know, kind of keep on monitoring that and keeping track of it, we have some debt payments to make. And I know, you know, there are equipments that people are, are talking about, so I don't think that that's going to be typical, you know, and a lot of times you can end up with a large excess like that, but it's just kind of a fluke and you're using it up through, throughout and, and you're budgeting, just like sometimes in the very beginning of the year, you have a big deficit because you're trying to build it up.
Right, yeah, no, I'm, I'm familiar with that and I know that Mr. Vance had said that solid removal is going to be expensive and that expense is still coming up and so I was just curious to see if you anticipated that that gap of revenue over expenses was going to continue. I know that we, you just took this role on, so I don't expect some of the answers, you may have to research this a little bit. Currently we are, have eight months' worth of operating income, that's awesome.
And that's in the total fund balance.
Right, when the audit was given to us in April, I thought that that number was higher and I did not go back and pull the audit to find out what that is.
And I, like you said, I would have to look at that, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Right, if you get a chance, sometimes it's not urgent.
Yeah, and if, you know, if it was presented to you in April, it was probably covering the period just to December last year. You know, so, but I will look at it and I'll let you know.
Okay, and I noticed the only two things I saw on the budget that stuck out at me was the Valley Three being way over budget in community development. Once again, I understand that you just got into this and so you may or may not have those answers.
I believe they had a, a large, a high expenditure for the roof at the Valley Theater that they had not budgeted for. And I think that's probably what put them over.
That is correct. So we had our huge leak at the Valley Three that we had to replace the roof. We still, we got a little bit of money from insurance to recoup that, but not for the replacement of the roof, just the damage to the inside of theaters two and three.
I figured that's what it was because I remembered that roof being an issue, but I thought I would look. And then there was the community development, which is over its line item, do you have any information on that?
I don't, I can't answer that one.
Okay, that's fine, as I said, I, you know, whenever you get a chance to look at that.
It might be, I, the, so the trail that went on over here behind Big R?
Right.
With S L V Go, Forest authorized the youth corps to come in and do portions of that trail. And that was fourteen thousand four hundred, fourteen thousand five hundred dollars for their couple, three, four weeks that they were there on the trail. When that came out, the community development thing.
Okay, because what I'm, what I'm looking at here shows that community development is over its line item by fifty-eight thousand.
Address all of those.
Okay, yeah, no, whenever you get a chance to look that up for us, that would be nice.
Okay, so the two things, the fund balance and the community involvement?
Um, community development, community development line item. And I think we've answered the Valley Three line item question. But if you wouldn't mind running that down and also if you'll go pull the audit and see what they said about the difference and how much we have there and just get that to us whenever.
Okay.
Yes, Charlotte?
Yeah, Council Foster, I also think, Nina, we did purchase, council, you guys authorized the purchase of that vacant lot over there by the school.
Okay.
That could probably be a part of that as well.
Okay.
That must be before your time.
Right, it would be before your time.
Sounds good, Nina, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll skip somebody else next time. I'll skip somebody else next time.
Oh. Actually, I'm gonna give this to Gigi to do, so.
Wait till she signs first, okay?
Evening, council mayor. I really don't have too much tonight. First and foremost, welcome, we are so excited to have Gigi here, it's, that's a huge relief, although they did throw me for a loop there with that. Yeah, but I really don't have very much, so the event center manager starts next week, I think she starts on Wednesday. So we're gonna get her in, get her introduced to all the key players, Stampede of Carla, of course, and then we're gonna get her up and running quickly, because hopefully by the first of December, we can actually start scheduling events and, and getting that open, so, and start getting stuff in there, so we can get her. We are having a city employee appreciation, I just sent an email out on that earlier today. So that's on November sixteenth, that's our open enrollment date for benefits. But we'd love to have you guys there, so we're gonna do a, a city appreciation, we're gonna have a luncheon and everything for all the employees and then we're gonna do some special recognitions of some of those that have kind of gone above and beyond during the COVID and that. Because if you look at, most of the employees, we never really, I mean, we might have had the doors locked, but the employees were here pretty much the entire time through COVID. We were not working from home or any of that, so, excuse me, I think we need to recognize, you know, pretty much for two years, the employees have showed up and have been very dedicated to the city and, and to the service of the citizens of Montevista, so we're gonna recognize that and then there's, you know, all the directors are going to, to look at, there's some special, you know, things that they've went above and beyond, like I've got a few from the police department that I'm gonna recognize, you know, Rob does, Jaime, you just, so we like have an awards, that we're actually gonna hand out awards, but we'd love to have you guys there, so that's on the sixteenth at eleven thirty, and we are going to have a chili cook-off, so if you guys are interested in being part of the chili cook-off, and we actually bought a, we got a nice little trophy, the first annual Montevista, city Montevista chili cook-off champion. So we're gonna do that just kind of for fun and then we'll have burgers and stuff like that, we're gonna have chili and then desserts and stuff like that, so please, please, please come to that if you guys can, if not, at least come over for lunch or whatever and stuff. So I believe Gigi's gonna be here and then we're gonna have pretty much all the city employees and do some recognition again of the, of the great work that they've done and stuck through the pandemic and, and came to work unlike most people staying at home. The employees pretty much stayed and, and worked here every single day, so I think we need to recognize them. You heard about, we will participate in the trunk or treat next week, I know the police department's gonna do, have a car out there handing it out, so again, bring your grandkids. I don't know that I necessarily need council's direction on this, but I just find this interesting that there's been a lot of questions on, when is trick or treat? I, I didn't know that we were in the business of regulating when trick or treat is, I assumed that it was on Halloween. But there's been people literally have said, hey, when, when's trick or treat? I guess my direction is, it's on Halloween night, on the thirty-first, unless you guys have some other reason that we should be governing when, when we're trick or treating, but I'll just put that out. I, I'm serious, I was like.
Some sometimes do that to keep it from being on a school night. That started several years ago. I don't know the.
Sunday night.
Yeah, I, I, again, this is just, this is my belief on it, is I don't think we should be in the business of regulating when, you know, I mean, I can see if there was like a natural disaster or something like that, and, and absolutely, we will support it a hundred, we'll support it a hundred percent, but I just wanted, I was like, maybe I missed something, because I know last year, you know, with COVID, this was my first year, I'm like, did I miss something? So just asking for advice on this, but I will put it out that trick or treat is on Halloween, is it, has been for, since I was a kid. So, okay, just want to make sure. You, today, we had the written cutting at, at Sanchez Park and, you know, I really want to put a shout out to Jaime. Jaime put a lot of work into that and that came out absolutely wonderful. The mayor was the master of ceremonies down there for it and then him and Martha were both there, so there was a really nice event and that's a beautiful park. And it was very interesting, the, the son of Mr. Sanchez, who lives, he works for the UN and he lives in Manhattan, he was here for the ceremony, so that was pretty, that was really awesome to have him here and stuff. And both the mayor and I got to talk to him, wonderful guy, he, they actually want to do, the family wants to do a lot more to really spruce that up and, and definitely the city will, and I know Gigi will be on board with that, the city be a partner in helping the family really spruce that up, but that's beautiful and the playground curtain is absolutely wonderful, so they did, it came out good and again, shout out to Jaime, as well as Rob's crew, because the, the city of Parks and Public Works guys were really involved in helping with that. As well as Kids Connection, Anika and her, some of her staff were down there to help them with it and stuff, so. But anyway, it's, if you get a chance to go by there, it came out absolutely beautiful and, and I'm gonna end this the way I started this. Welcome, we are so glad to have you, thank you, any questions?
Is the event coordinator's name public?
Yeah, her name's Stephanie Roywell, she's from, she's actually from Valley Girls, she grew up in the valley, she's from Moera. She has, she has some experience in it, I mean, you know, we, we did interviews and stuff on that and Kathy, Kathy Woods from Friends was there and then we talked with Gigi, Gigi has some background in this, so, yeah, we're excited to have her on. She, she grew up here, went to Centauri, graduated high school, went to Western State and then went to, she did a bunch of that up at the college up there and then she was in Arizona for quite a few years, did wedding planning and that, so she has some experience in, and she'll be good, so, she's a go-getter, so that'll be, it'll be awesome to have her on, so, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Worth that more days.
Who's counting? Till January one. Thank you, chief. City clerk, report.
Good evening again, mayor and council. In your packet is my report, just a couple of things I wanted to highlight is the, on banking information of the Sky High project. I've submitted pay request number three to DOLA. That, I did get approval today that that was accepted, so we should be receiving the third payout from DOLA on that within the next two weeks, it usually takes about ten days for them to turn that around. City clerk's office, like I said, when you passed the resolution, just really busy trying to keep up with the laws that are coming down from the liquor and tobacco division. Working on getting ready for the end of the year, sending out letters for people to renew their business license applications. With that being said, I just want to remind everybody again that if you were doing a business within the city of Montevista or if you were interested in opening a business within the city of Montevista, please stop by the clerk's office and pick up a welcome packet. All businesses must have a business license within the city of Montevista. So I do have a welcome packet for new businesses that are looking to open, so I'd like to get that to them. So if you all know people who are coming in, please send them my way so I can give them that packet. One of the big things that's come to light, and I've spoken with both the city attorney and the chief about, is I had an application come in for a business license for a CBD shop. Went back and pulled the ordinance that was passed in two thousand thirteen. The ordinance was to prohibiting the operation of marijuana cultivation facilities, marijuana products, manufacturing facilities, marijuana testing facilities, or retail marijuana stores within the city of Montevista within that ordinance of the definition, and if you look at your packet, you'll see the definition that was under the marijuana. Both the city attorney and the chief looked at that and we cannot come to any decision where a CBD shop would not be allowed within the city limits. It does say that it does not include fiber produced from the stock oil or cake made from the seed of the plant, sterilized seeds of the plant, which is incapable of germination or weight of any other ingredient combination thereof. So with that decision, I will be moving forward with processing that application for an CBD shop. Unless council has something different that they would like for me to move forward with. The next thing is municipal courts, we've been extremely busy. Court, this year we moved to one day a week and we're doing it, or excuse me, one day a month and it's on the third Wednesday of each month and we're doing it from nine AM to eleven, eleven AM. It makes for a very busy court day, but it's very productive. A lot of things get done between the judge and city attorney, we have a lot of defendants who in lieu of fines can complete useful public service or they're sent to the circle program if they're a minor. Currently, to date, as of from January first to date, we have fifty-three thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars that we have collected and fourteen thousand dollars in restitution, or excuse me, one thousand dollars in restitution that we have collected and have paid back to the citizens or businesses within the community. Planning and zoning, I'm sure you guys have heard and there will be an article in the paper next week. The Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public meeting on October twenty-eighth to consider the rezoning of certain properties located within the commercial zone district, commercial business zone district. The properties that are located in the two hundred block of the commercial business zone district, if you, two of our planning commission members actually took the map out, went down and drove all of those properties. And ninety percent of those properties are either residential, they're used as a resident, or they're church. So currently, those two things are not in allowed use in a commercial business zone district. So what the Planning and Zoning Commission is looking at doing is rezoning those properties to meet their use and get them out of being non-conforming uses. So if you're interested in coming to that meeting, it will come to council at a later date, but they will be having their first public meeting on October twenty-eighth.
On the two hundred block, there's a church?
Two hundred block, Washington.
Yeah, so it's, so we're looking at the entire.
She didn't specify what street it was.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Oh, okay. I just see Adams.
No, it's the entire commercial business zone district.
May I ask a question? So, this might be a question for Mike, but actually, I don't think you guys can attend the meeting on the twenty-eighth because you'd be receiving, you'd be hearing the background of the information before it actually came to you to make the final decision, so.
I know we're supposed to have the, I, I thought we were supposed to have one council member that sat on the planning zoning and I don't know for sure. That's the way it was in the past, so, I don't know, Mike?
You probably need to have a public hearing on it, for sure.
So what you're saying is that we would be acting in a quasi judicial state when we hear the argument and therefore our participation in it in advance would bias our.
So potentially.
Okay, I understand.
When I was a commissioner, we did that stance that Gigi also mentioned at Rebound.
See, learn something new every day.
So nobody attend.
Because the planning commission would be first and then you guys would have a public hearing on it and have to look back.
With their suggestions.
Right. I think that certainly would be the best way.
Is that open for, like, meet people to go listen on the 28th year? At what time?
At 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
And then the last thing I wanted to speak with council about is if you all know that the Welcome to the City of Montevista sign that's east of town, it sits on the property that belongs to Jim Schroeder. They are selling that property. We did speak, I did speak to Mr. Schroeder and he's agreed to give the city an easement to that sign. That sign was put up on a gentleman's handshake, so there was never an easement, there was never anything else with that sign. Mr. Schroeder has asked for $1,200 for that easement. You all, as council, two months ago, you guys approved that $1,200 to be paid to Mr. Schroeder. Finally got in touch with Davidson Engineering, they finally called me back. They said that it would be very easy to create that easement and it'll cost about $800 to $1,200. So I'm looking for council's approval to move forward with that.
Is that a motion?
Maybe it's not a question, but what do they have to do to create an easement?
There needs to be a motion for that.
They have to go out and find the property pins and he said he won't have to do a full survey, but he does have to locate certain property pins and then create a legal description for that easement.
And then that prevents, prevents the owner from rescating the outside sign one day.
Or the people who are getting ready to purchase that property, you know, no, I don't want the city to have to sign that.
It is reported.
Nita, when's he gonna have the sale, do we know?
Um, the sale is pending.
Pending, okay.
And I know that the buyer is, he knows that we're in the process of doing this.
Cause we definitely want to have, I mean, if we're gonna spend the money on a survey and all that, we need to make sure we get that in before the sale if we can.
Question, what about the sign out west?
I have no idea, I'd have to research that.
I would assume it's probably the exact same. Cause that's on, I'm not even sure the owner of that property.
Part of it might be among this cemetery.
That's what I was thinking, it's actually the cemetery. But I would assume it's the exact same thing, that would be my assumption.
I would think that in, even if they close on the sale of that house beforehand, if I'm not mistaken, the title, the closing company would have to put in a full disclosure that this is being done. So, I mean, I still think it would be better for it to get done, but I realize it would be cleaner and easier to get done before the closing. But even if it's not, that does have to be disclosed that this is being done, everyone has to sign off on agreeing to it.
So I move that we approve, the city clerk proceed with getting a legal description of the easement, is that correct?
Second. It's been moved and seconded for the city clerk to go ahead and proceed with the getting the easement, legal easement and the price of between $800 to $1,200 bucks. Davidson Engineering, correct?
Correct.
Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Nita. Mr. Vance?
Good evening again, council, you have my report in your packets. Just kind of briefly touch on some of the highlights. The trail behind big R is substantially complete. Our street crew helped with the trail at different points of it and we kind of did the final grading of the parking lot out there. And they've also been helping out at the Sanchez Street Project out there at the park. As time allows, they've been winterizing the parks, we're kind of a little behind on that, but we'll continue to do that. I'm not gonna steal any Jaime's thunder, but the park is getting pretty close. The new playground is in, the concrete has to set up for the next 72 hours. So unfortunately, the public can't use it right now. We have a little bit of mulch to get in and we'll have that all done on Monday and the park will be open and usable on Monday. So it is, if you have not been over there, it is a fantastic playground. Two structures, one for two to five and then the other structure is geared for ages five to 12. So it's a really good improvement in Sanchez Park. I hope everybody will be happy with it. I don't know, mayor, did you want to say anything on that? You were there at the ribbon cutting today. I think Jaime did a fantastic job and I don't want to take any of his thunder. I'm sure he'll bring his report to you next meeting, so kind of want to just.
Well, we can proceed with the thunder when he brings his report, that is awesome. What Jaime did to get this all put together and the fact that the Kaboom Group was there and Colorado.
Trust.
The health.
The Colorado Health.
The supporting it and all the people in the community that supported that. That was along the list and the concrete, they were waiting for the concrete.
REC, we did miss it, we didn't mention REC.
REC was there. The crew, Monarch Fire Department.
Council Locke.
Optimistics were there, there was a lot of people that got involved with that project.
Couple of church groups came and did, it was a good, it was a good project. And considering that the playground was supposed to be delivered on Monday and that actually wasn't delivered until Wednesday, things were absolutely incredible in each group. I mean, they brought mulch in, dug holes, got everything ready. So when the playground did show up, it was just go, go, go. So, concrete due today, it wasn't any fault of the concrete. But we had to change because we didn't have a playground to meet the original thing. So we had to change that and the only opening they had was today at 1:00. So everybody really humped and really got after it, so it was a really good project.
That was awesome. It was also very awesome that Mr. Sanchez assumes there.
Yes.
That was great. We actually had him cut the ribbon, so that was awesome.
And we've had our parks employee, he's been helping out with the streets. We also have been doing a little upgrade in the heating in our park shop. So I'm hoping that the newer radiant heater, these are the heaters that came out of the old Sky High. When they tore it down, we saved those, so we reused those in our, in the park shop. Got rid of the drip, we had an old, I don't know if anybody remembers, the old diesel drip styled heaters. That's what we had in the park shop, so it was a little scary. In the utility side of things, believe it or not, I'm kind of proud, but we've had some really late season taps. So in the last month, we've had four brand new taps come into the city. So one was an infill development over there off of Bronc and the other three were brand new developments in Terror of the Soul, so we are still moving along. So we got those all done. We've been doing some hydrant flushing, cleaning out, making sure we don't get any sediment in our lines. Unfortunately, some of the people may have experienced some milky water over here on this side of town and that's from an air, air pocket got in the line somewhere. So as it dissipates out, doesn't harm the water system at all, doesn't make us do anything different. There'll be just times that you may turn your frosted on and get a thing of air or you go to fill a glass and it'll have kind of a white milky color and then it'll slowly dissipate. Doesn't do anything. So we're letting the system kind of settle and let that air pocket kind of work its way out. So it tells me that somewhere there's a belly in one of the lines, so. On my chair, what have I been doing? Sky High continues to move along, I'm gonna give Carla a huge shout out. She, she just amazes me is how her mind goes and she's always moving and shaking and trying to get things and figuring and playing the shell game and trying to make sure we have funding and everything. So it's been, it's been a pleasure and it's been a learning experience, so thank you. That project's going really well, they're doing concrete outside, so been moving on. The trail that I talked about earlier, I think they sent you an email, but they're looking at doing a grand opening. Very early in December, like the 3rd or 4th. So they kind of want to do a grand opening and a ribbon cutting ceremony there. So if any council, if you guys could put that on your calendars, that would be good. Our streets project is getting near to completed. We're done with the water sewer and storm portions of the project. We will be getting into final blading and asphalt here very soon. ACI is finishing up over at Terror of the Soul and as soon as they're done there, they're gonna turn their attentions to Bronc. So we'll get that all taken care of. Terror of the Soul, that's a new filing for the city, a new subdivision, 57 lots. It is in the final stages of paving, so that'll be, hopefully by the end of the week, will be completed and city will have 50 more residential lots that are available. According to the real housing, they have 10 people that have gone through their system, three of which we've already done the taps for, so there's a possibility of seven new ones coming early 2022. That's, that's exciting for the city. Also working with Excel on the street lights for that second filing of Terror of the Soul and of course, moving forward with our wastewater plant project. And finally, welcome aboard, thank you. Looking forward to it.
How is the wastewater project coming along?
We have got everything to this point that we can send off to USDA. US, we're waiting on the response or the next steps from USDA. You have to kind of remember at this time of the year, being the federal government, they actually suck all their money back and then they reissue it again, so it's a little slow at this time of the year, but we're moving forward. I'm expecting here in the very near future that we will actually start the design. I want to make sure that we get Gigi on board and get you guys on board. We need to have a really serious talk and a marketing plan for the public. We need to have a huge discussion on rate increases and what we're gonna need to do. I really cannot stress enough that I want to make sure that each member of council fully understands what we need to do with this project and why it's necessary. Cause it is quite, it's quite scary when you look at the numbers, okay? But it is something that is mandated and we really don't have a choice and that's really not the answer that we want. But we have to do it and I really want you guys to fully understand. So, I mean, you've had a couple of presentations, we'll do whatever we need to do to make sure that this council fully understands what's coming up, okay? We cannot stress that enough.
So love the new taps, by my Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor. The new taps then, are we able to charge these new ones the new rates?
We cannot do that because we have not adopted anything as far as a rate increase. So the fees have been set based on ordinance, so without doing another ordinance, we cannot do that. So we're, we're still charging our original rates, so.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Kristen?
Yeah, I know, you guys always get excited when it comes up. Good evening, everyone, and you guys do have my report. I'm sure you'd love to hear all the little details inside of it, but I'm sure most of us want to go home by this point. So I'm just gonna point out a few of the more notable things. The city now has a new host and a new NAS. The main reason why I'm pointing it out is because these are the first two pieces of hardware that the city has purchased, like the city of Montevista has purchased at this scale. Generally, all of our hosts have been donated from Alamosa. The big thing to note here is we're having to update and update pretty heavily. Windows 11 just released, I know we just all learned Windows 10, but they did release a new OS. And with that comes a lot of new overhead, new security, new, more policies we have to comply with, things along those lines. So we are updating in the background. I know in this particular report, I'm just more pointing out the fact that we purchased them, but as of today, I did get them both up and running and along with that, our backups changed. So now they are immutable backups, meaning they're tamper proof. Even we can't go in and make changes to them, which is actually a very good thing, especially on a crypto virus side of things, which I believe is why we are here in the first place. So we're, we're getting to be very secure over, over here in this particular city. Other than that, we've pushed out a couple of computers, we have a whole bunch of phones coming in. We, I'm redoing the whole entire police department's cell phones. And today was a very bad day, but we got all of public works. I have Rob here's testimony that we, we did not have a fun day today. Other than that though, there is a bunch of little things. I know our reports now include our tickets and all sorts of other fun little bits of details. If you guys have any questions, now's the time.
Thank you, Brian, thank you for helping me even tonight.
Yeah, it's those little things right there that never get reported. So you guys go and look at our reports and you see X amount of things, just know generally it's four or five times that. But like me coming out there helping with your computer, we don't keep track of that stuff. So, I don't know, we're always busy. But other than that, thank you guys very much.
Thank you, man.
I know you guys love these reports.
You're like the guy in the background that's the main key to this, so thank you so much.
Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain.
All right, remove the council committee, city commission and council reports. Martha, we'll start with you tonight.
I just want to say that I appreciate Ms. Margot's observation that things are happening and things are happening and a lot that hasn't been announced yet. I think that two years from now, this is gonna look really different. I mean, unless some disaster in the world strikes and none of the ships ever get to shore. But, but the biggest thing was Sanchez Park. And it wasn't just today, it was yesterday when we were there working and all I did was move wheelbarrows of sawdust. Takes a lot of skill and know-how to do that. That's probably why they gave me that job, thought I couldn't mess it up, they were wrong. But it showed me what, as a community, when we come together and we want to do something and we want to accomplish something, we can do that. We don't have to hire everything out. We could have paid people to move all that mulch. We could have paid people to put that equipment together, we could have paid people to dig those holes. But our community stepped up and did that. And I just wonder with that sort of attitude, how much more, how much more can we do with that attitude? That we're gonna get out there and dig the holes, we're gonna get out there and move the sawdust, we're going to do this. There are some skilled positions that have to be hired out to get that. But it was just so amazing to see this and then today, the ribbon cutting and the, the the cherry on the top of it for me. A mom brought her two little ones and one of them didn't talk much, she looked about four years old. The other one was about two and mom was holding her and she just kept smiling and she kept saying, play, 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 play. It baby talk, that wasn't baby talk. But anyway, to see this little child. But anyway, to see this little child getting so excited and realizing that the community members are the ones that put it in. You know, this wasn't a circus that we've paid to come in, this wasn't something, this was something that we put together. And the fact that, uh, Mr. Sanchez and the rest of the family wanna do even more. Uh, I got to talk with, I got to speak with one of the other Kaboom representatives last night at, at Rain Brew. It's just amazing, if you go down downtown at night, you will meet people. Stay, pay, pay attention to where you are, though, when you're meeting them. But, um, they, um, she said that, that, that the community involvement was the key to how Kaboom is successful in all of these things. And that really resonated with me, and so I just, I just wanna put that out there, I'm not sure how to accomplish that with all the different goals that we have. But not being sure how just means we put our heads together, we figure it out. How do we pull this community together, we pull them together to put a park up, what else can we do? What else can we do? And do we, and you know, and Kaboom organized this, and I appreciate that, and I hope that we learned from how they organized it so that we can mimic that over and over and over again with other projects. So I'm just, I'm just grateful to, to be in this community that, that went out there and built a playground, and maybe it's not a big deal to a lot of people, but it was a big deal to me. And it was certainly a big deal to that two-year-old, no jokes about me being the two-year-old. I, I just realized that was, I set myself up for that one. But me and the two-year-old, we're real excited.
Nice. Larry?
This weekend, starting Friday, is the annual Montevista Outdoor and Gun Show. Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday, late morning, early afternoon. This is put on by the Montevista Rotary Club, it is one of the major fundraisers for the Rotary Club. All the profits from the gun show go back into the community, we do not use any of the gun show profits for running the club. It allows us to do things like, um, we just recently did a five-hundred-dollar contribution to Montevista Community Relief Fund, or whatever that's called. Rotary also chipped in about ten thousand for the Sky High project. So come out and see the Outdoor and Gun Show, even if you're not a gun person, there's a lot of diversity in the vendors that we've got this year, probably only half the people there are gun-related, so come on out and see the show, that is, uh, all weekend long.
All right, sounds good.
It's at Sky High, by the way.
I, uh, I, I wish I would've been, uh, at the ribbon opening, the circumstances had me at work. But, uh, I really don't have a whole lot of things, I do have, um, one thing, I guess, that I've had a few people complain about, and, uh, one person just recently told me that, they, uh, right here on Morris and the highway, when you're coming off of Red by Dale's house, uh, there's some bushes to the left. And, uh, one, somebody told me, I went out and I, I had to go out into the road in order to see cars, and I, and a cop almost hit me, and he pulled me over and gave me a ticket, or he pulled me over and something happened. And so they, so they complained, they were like, I almost got into a wreck here at this corner, and a cop, by a cop, and he pulled me over. And that's not the only person that's complained about that particular spot, but those bushes there, um, I think can be a hazard. And I even find myself, 'cause I drive through there a lot, um, I, I find myself all the time pulling out, and then like not being able to see, and then pulling out further, and a car's coming, and I'm, and, and then they're like, you know, they always think I'm gonna pull out because it looks like that. So they're like, you know, you can kinda see their car kinda jiggle down the road a little bit, and it's like, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So anyways, uh, that's really all I have. I don't know if there's something that we can do about that.
Mr. Warren?
Thanks, Carla, for all your hard work. Welcome, Gigi. I'm looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. I, I got a whole lineup, so we're gonna stay here till ten o'clock, because that's what Linda requested. Uh, no, one thing I wanna do, I got several things here, but, but I'll make it quick. So Kaboom, um, I talked to the young man Hunter, who was here from Washington.
Washington DC.
From Washington DC, he said, in all the areas that he goes into, he enjoys what he's doing, but he said Montevista was probably the most welcoming community that he had been into. Said everybody was great, all the volunteers were great, and just how people made him feel at home here. He really, really enjoyed that, so kudos to Montevista for doing that. The Sanchez Park thing, again, I'll shout out to Jaime, that was amazing, and all the involvement from everybody in the community. And it's, when we talk community, it's not just Montevista, it wasn't just Laria, it was community, everybody was involved. This weekend as well is Make a Difference Day, uh, Saturday. If you go to the dump with your yard waste or whatever, you pick canned goods to get it dumped, and that all goes back to the food bank, as we are coming up on Thanksgiving, and we know it's probably gonna be a very busy time at the food bank this year, I'm assuming. The theme for the Christmas parade will be Christmas in Candyland, so get your ideas out there, Jim, I expect to see you. Don't forget that also on Saturday, the Proud Military Parents and Supporters will be doing a send-off at eleven AM. So it's Saturday at eleven, so don't forget that.
Faith Memorial Park.
Yep, at the Faith Memorial, Faith Hinckley Memorial Park, so is where that's at, so be sure if you are available to go and support the young person, it's a young man, if I remember right, that's gonna be going out, so. I know in the election voting is coming up, I'm not gonna get too carried away on what I have to say about that, because I don't know where I, if I can or can't, but, uh, please read the book. Please pay attention to what the questions are, because one of them is crucial to finances for all municipalities, please pay attention to that. Really, I, that's all I have. Welcome aboard, Carla, thank you so much for what you do, and everybody in this room. I appreciate everybody in here and what this community is.
Boy, and don't forget to vote.
And don't forget to vote, but read the book. We will adjourn the meeting till November fourth at six PM. I got it right tonight.